Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'm William Elmore, Mayor, City of Dunn. Tonight is Tuesday, November 9, 2021. At 7:00 PM, this meeting is being held in the Dunn Municipal Building. I'd like to welcome each of you here tonight. It's always good to see folks come out and participate in our local government and the things that we do here. I welcome each of you here, and certainly we'll be hearing from some of you throughout the night, and we look forward to your comments. I would like to mention that Commissioner Gallon cannot be with us tonight due to sickness, so she is absent, and she sends her regards. I'd like to ask if you have cell phones with you tonight, if you would please silence those or turn them off, so we will not have any interruptions during the meeting. That'd be greatly appreciated. First couple of things we'll do tonight is our invocation and our pledge. And as I'm introducing this gentleman to come to the podium to give us our prayer, I'd like to say his name is Roy Johnson. Roy is known by many, many people in this area. He's been a great community citizen and been a chaplain at Betsy Johnson Hospital, and just a great guy. He has served as chaplain of the Dunn Police Department as well, and he's chaplain with Community Home Healthcare and Hospice. And he's served as our police chaplain for over 27 years. And Roy, thank you so much for that and all you've done for the community. I'd like to call you up if you have any words. And I'd like to ask the audience, if you would, to please stand following his prayer. We'll ask Commissioner Seals to lead us into pledge.
Just a greetings to the councilmen. Good to see y'all. Love you. Let us pray. Our Father, we do give you thanks for your blessings and freedom to serve you. And as we enter the Thanksgiving and Christmas season, our prayer, may we all have grateful hearts for our liberty for this great nation that we live. Tonight, dear Lord, we pray your blessings for this city council meeting. Your words instructs us to pray for our leaders, and we do, Lord, and we thank you for the men and women that are called to serve our seat of government. I pray you grant favor and blessing upon each of them and their families. And also, we pray, dear Lord, that you would grant wisdom and understanding as they serve the duties of their office. And our Father, also tonight, we pray that your shield of protection and safety to always surround our law enforcement and our first responders 24/7, we pray. And also, Lord, we dearly pray tonight for our nation, for our President and his cabinet, the Congress and our governors. Divinely, we pray, dear God, that your hand of guidance to lead them, to keep America to always be the land of the free and the home of the brave. This we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
.................................................................................
First item on our agenda tonight is the adjustment and approval of the November 9, 2021, meeting. You've been presented an agenda, and just like to see if there's any changes or adjustments to this agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed that Rodney was going to retire. Can we not let that happen?
I'm not sure about that.
Minutes for that.
If there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion by Commissioner Seals.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McLean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, we'll call on our city manager, Mr. Newshaffer, to introduce some new employees.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Debbie Debra Creighton from the Administration Department is here. She's been here just about six months. Comes to us from the city of Goldsboro, as well as a couple of other municipalities. We're so happy to have her with us, but I'd like to introduce you to her. She's been around, obviously, for a little bit of time and had some interactions with the council. But welcome. Thank you so much for being here. We do appreciate it. And then I think the chief has somebody he'd like to introduce as well.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you Jacob Baird, who is a graduate of Midway High School and currently resides in the Plainview area of Sampson County. He is a dedicated husband and father of two young boys. Jacob attended BLET at Sampson Community College and was sworn in as deputy sheriff in Hornet County in 2016, where he served until being hired by our agency in April of this year. Jacob loves being involved in the community and making a positive impact by volunteering and being a positive role model for younger people in our city. Again, I welcome Jacob Baird.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Debbie, Jacob, on behalf of the city council and the city staff, welcome to the city of Dunn. We hope you're stable with us. We'll be a long one, and I'll look forward to working with you. One of the responsibilities that is a pleasure to do is when the mayor gets an opportunity to present a proclamation. And I don't know of a proclamation that I present in a year's time that's any more important than this one. This proclamation is for recognition of Veterans Day. And I know, sitting on this board, we have at least two members, and that's Councilmember Turnage and Councilmember McLean, that both have served in military for us. I'd like for you guys to stand, if you would. And I know that Councilmember, I mean, the city manager, Stephen Newshaffer, also has served in the military. And if there's any in the audience that have served us in our military, if you would, please stand at this time. And I'd like to say thank you to each one of you for the services that you have done for us over the years. You've put your life on line for us as a nation, and for that, we're very thankful. Thank you to commissioners for your willingness to continue your service by serving the city of Dunn in your council seats. And at this time, I'd like to read the proclamation, which reads, "Recognition of Veterans Day 2021. Whereas Veterans Day is an annual holiday in the United States honoring military veterans and is observed on November 11, which is the anniversary of the signing of the armada that ended World War I, whereas on Veterans Day, we reflect upon the invaluable contributions of our country's veterans and reaffirm our commitment to provide them and their families with the support they have earned. Whereas on Veterans Day, we pay tribute to the service and sacrifice of the men and women who bravely defended our freedom, answering the cause of duty and risking their lives to protect their fellow countrymen, thereby inspiring our nation with their courage and dedication. Whereas the observance of Veterans Day not only preserves the historical significance of the date, but helps focus attention on the important purpose of Veterans Day, a celebration to honor America's veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to serve and sacrifice for the common good. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor WMP Elmore Jr., do hereby proclaim November 11, 2021, as Veteran Day in the city of Dunn. And on behalf of the city council and the residents of Dunn and all those who call Dunn home, extend our heartfelt gratitude to our veterans and encourage our community to recognize their valor and sacrifice by showing them the honor they are due through appropriate ceremonies and by uplifting our veterans in your prayers." And I'd like to ask the audience, if you would, to join me in a round of applause for these. Thank you. And I would like to ask that you continue to remember our veterans and our active-duty folks that are still serving this country. Remember them in your prayers, if you would. They have a really difficult job out protecting us. Item four is the opportunity that we give the public to come in and sign up. And if you have anything that you would like to speak about to the public, we ask that you sign up. We give you three minutes to do that. This does not, if you're planning to speak at the public hearing, you'll be recognized at that time. But did we have anyone sign up for that time? Okay, so we'll move on beyond that. Items that we're going to consider for consent items will be, item five is the approval of minutes of October 12, 2021 meeting. Item six is a resolution approving a 2022 city council regular meeting schedule. Item seven is approving temporary blocking of the alley for Stewart Theater. Item eight is temporary blocking of the streets for the Dunn Christmas Parade, which I'm thankful we're having this year. Item nine is destruction of municipal records requested by the Parks and Recreation Department. And item 10 is conveyance of personal property to the Dunn Police Athletic League. And I present that to the board and ask for a motion approving these items.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent items five through 10, presented.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Bradham and second by Commissioner Tartt. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a number of public hearings that we're going to be taking care of tonight. And we're going to start out, I think we've got seven or eight of these, but the first one we're going to start out is item 11, and it's a request for an ordinance amendment identified as OA-10-21 amendments to Chapter 22 zoning, Section 22-1. And it's the definitions adding a used called transitional housing dormitory. And in hearing that, I would like to call on George Adler to come up with his presentation. And at this time, I would like to open a public hearing on this matter.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a text amendment that's a little bit different than other ones that I've brought, because it comes from a private organization rather than city staff or elected officials. This is a request to add a new definition to the zoning ordinance, not to change an existing definition, but to add a new one. The language of the new definition, which you have in your packets, would allow for transitional housing dormitories, that is, short-term addiction recovery programs, where the participants in recovery live in the home and go through the program for generally up to approximately 18 months. The ordinance already allows this type of facility, but limits the number of participants to 12 and only as a special use in three zoning districts, C3, office and institutional, and multifamily. Adopting the new definition would not change that. The new definition is worded the same, but would allow up to 30 participants. Like the existing definition of transitional housing facility, this new additional definition of transitional housing dormitory requires a separation distance of at least one-half mile radius from other such facilities, including family care homes and group homes. Included in your packets is a map showing that radius of existing transitional housing facilities, family care homes, and group homes. The organization making this request is Hope Center Ministries, an organization with other such houses in North Carolina and several other states. Members of Hope Center Ministries are here tonight to tell you about their organization and their approach to treating the illness of addiction and to answer any questions you may have about them. On October 26, Hope Center presented this request to the planning board. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend adoption of this amendment. It's important to mention that the issue here is whether or not council wants to allow such resources in Dunn. The organization making the request is important, but secondary, because once the definition's in the code, any organization can request it. That said, this amendment as proposed would create this new definition and allow it only in areas zoned RM multifamily with a special use permit. And council will have the prerogative to adopt or deny a request should that come. An alternative approach for locating such a dormitory would still require council approval, but it would be done through a conditional rezoning to RM with the condition being to limit that RM parcel to only one use, transitional housing dormitory for addiction recovery programs of up to 30 persons. In existing RM districts, an organization would have to seek a special use permit or a conditional rezoning, plus be at least one-half mile radius from other such facilities to meet code requirements. So a strict limit to the number of such facilities or dormitories possible in the city is established in the ordinance. I don't know if you have any questions. I'd be happy to.
Are there any questions for George before we call him publicly to speak? Any clarification? Okay, thank you for that report. At this time, I would like to open the floor for anyone that would like to speak in favor or against this ordinance change. If you would, please, anyone that would like to speak, if you'd please come forward and approach the podium. And if you would, please give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Travis Byrd. My address is 4011 Franklin Street, Rocky Mount, Virginia. So I am the Regional Director of Hope Center Ministries, also the Campus Director for our Axton, Virginia location. But I oversee Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina. But I just wanted to tell you very briefly about our program. As our director for the Dunn location has a stomach virus, and he is out. But we are a long-term drug and alcohol recovery program. I always define Hope Center with four adjectives. Number one, we are Christ-centered. We are not a faith-based rehab or treatment location, but a Christian-based drug and alcohol recovery program. We are also long-term, so each of our residents are at our location for a year. That is how long our program is. It is residential, so residents do live in the home with 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week supervision. And then also, we're a vocational training program. And what that means, that's how we're funded. 70% of our funding comes through our vocational training program, and that's where we'll partner with other organizations in the community, trying to improve the workforce here in the city of Dunn. And that's how these men are funded through the program. With us being Christian-based, we don't count on federal or state funding, and we charge a very minimal fee of just one-time $700 for someone to come in, and that's all they ever pay out of pocket. But their funds during their second phase of our program is what they make at that vocational training is what funds our program. And so our idea is to take a holistic approach to recovery. Our goal, you might be shocked for me to say this, but our goal is not sobriety. Our goal is to lead men to a relationship with Christ, and we believe that a fully devoted follower of Christ, a byproduct is sobriety. Now, we do follow 12 steps of celebrate recovery, so we're certainly addressing addiction, but we're addressing life skills, marriage, work, parenting, all of those things. And so I assume I'm speaking as a public member right now, so if you can ask me questions, you're more than welcome to, but I'm trying to stay within my three minutes. So I appreciate your time.
The three minutes does not apply in our public hearing, so feel free.
Okay, fantastic. Okay. So I shared a lot in a short amount of time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. The property we are looking at is 11142 NC 55 Highway in Dunn, North Carolina, very close to Cracker Barrel and Walmart, right there in town. We do currently operate a quote-unquote Dunn Hope Center, but it's at a Goldsboro location. We found ourselves in a situation where we had to purchase a home because we were renting the old children's, or Falcon. We were in Falcon at an IPHC property, and they were doing their kids camp, so we had to find a home. So we bought something in Goldsboro. But our intention is certainly to get back to Dunn and to this area to start restoring this area and addressing the addiction issues here.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Just a clarification. So when someone comes into the center, they're there for a minimum of a year or up to a year, depending on their needs?
They're there for, our program is one year long. Now-
Stay the whole year.
Correct. That is correct. Men do have the option to leave. We're not a lockdown facility, so if someone were to approach me and say, hey, I want to quit, I'm going to talk to them about the benefits of staying, but ultimately, they're there voluntarily. But our program is a year. For you to successfully complete our program, you would have to be there for an entire year. I'll say one more thing, just because I don't want to be contradicting. If you ever were to look at our website, it mentions an eight-month program. We have 581 residents at Hope Center nationwide. That's from Hawaii all the way to North Carolina. I think 18 are on our eight-month program. It's more expensive. You pay out-of-pocket 700 each month. So you're going to see an eight-month program if you were to look online, but what, 97% are on our one-year program. So I'll speak to the one-year program.
Is this a self-referral? Do they refer themselves, or is it a, somebody else refers them there, a family member, court order type thing?
Yep. It's all of the above.
Okay.
So we do work with the court systems. Looking at Hope Center nationwide, about 70% of our residents are court-ordered. That is something that they request. Obviously, if a judge were to give them sentencing and suspend it on completion of a program, they still have to accept that. But yes, I've had people admit themselves, family members. At the end of the day, we're going to interview every single resident that comes in. We have an admissions coordinator, and that is their sole position, or sole responsibility, is to get people into the Hope Center. And so they're going to put them through a vetting process, and if they're accepted. But they're referred from all different kinds of things: short-term recovery programs, jail, from the street, whatever the case may be.
Sir, one question. What is your statistics as far as going the whole year?
As far as how many residents actually make it through the full-year program?
Right.
Right now, 33% of residents who are admitted make it through the entire one-year program. To share another statistic with you that I'm proud of, of our graduates, we've had over 1,000 graduates at Hope Center Ministries since we started 14 years ago in Tennessee. 68% of our graduates are successful. And what I mean by success, once again, I said sobriety's not our goal. It's one of our goals, but we define success as do they have a relationship with the Lord? How do we measure that? Well, I can't see their heart. I'm going to measure it by do they go to church. Number two, are they working and providing for our family? Work is a huge core value for us. So are they working? Are they in church? And are they sober? And so that's where, when I say success, I want to make sure I'm clear on that 68%.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Byrd? Okay?
If it's okay. Can I just hand a pamphlet here?
Absolutely.
I got copies for everybody, so if you don't mind passing them through. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor or against this proposed ordinance change?
My name is Edward Delisle Jr. I'm a current resident at Hope Center Ministries. I've been there just about three months. I'm not going to stand here and lie and say that this journey's easy. It's designed to be something that you work for, to gain, anything worth having, you know? You work hard for it. We work hard for our sobriety. We work hard for the Lord. You know, since coming to Hope Center, I've lost my wife. I've lost contact with my children. I've had ups and downs, but I've gained so much more. I've gained a relationship with Jesus Christ. I have my life back. I have a brotherhood. Five of the men that are sitting behind me, we go to war for each other every day. We fight for each other every day. And we go to battle every day to work for what we have. We don't want this. We need this. We have to have this, this relationship that we have with each other. We form a bond. It's a family. It's not just a bunch of residents, a bunch of drug addicts trying to recover. It's a family that we build. We all love each other. We all care about each other, and we fight for each other. When somebody tries to leave, we do everything that we possibly can to get them to stay. We don't just let them walk out that door. We try to make sure that they have contact numbers and resources if they do choose to leave, so that they can still have contact with us and continue to reach out to us. We have a church family, a bunch of them sitting behind us that love us, that help us get through life, to help disciple us and to keep us going in the right direction and see what the Lord has planned for us. Because we all know that once God calls you, there's no running from God. He grabs hold of you, and you just, there's no getting away, you know? Our brotherhood is strong. Our family is strong. We work for everything that we got, the blood, sweat, tears. We cry together. We laugh together. We have fun together. We do everything together. We live life together for a year, and some of us longer, you know, because we can intern after to help other people after us. You know, we always have that hand out trying to get help, but we got to keep the hand behind us to bring the next one with us. It's not about us. It's about the one who created us, and it's about that next man. We get sober for the next man. We don't get sober for ourselves. In my opinion, we get sober to help somebody else, because you never know who's watching you and who you're going to bring along with you. But thank you.
Before you leave, could I have your last name again, please?
Delisle. It's spelled D-E capital L-I-S-L-E.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Hey, I'm Randy Atkins. I'm also a resident at Hope Center. I've been there seven months. Just to give a little bit about me, like, I was in the addiction thing for six years before I come into Hope Center. As soon as I walked through the door, they gave me a Bible, something that I knew I needed. Immediately, they talked to me and told me to get in it. So I did. So the second week after that, I got saved on Friday. But after that, it's been a whole 360 thing. And like, the way Hope Center works and the operation of the Jesus part of things, like he said, the main focus ain't on the recovery, but it's Jesus. And I've noticed for me, accepting Jesus and following His word and-
Our pastors.
Our church family that I never had out there outside of things while I was going through this. I was looking for people to love me, to be there, to be able to give me that. But I never found that until I found Hope Center. And so this seven months, even on the days that it gets hard, they come, they pray with us. Like, we got guys at the house. We all work together. It's like Eddie said, it's a family. It's a thing that we build together. And it's all through Christ. It's not us. It's not the program. It's none of that. It's all through Christ. And that's what I believe in the most, and that's why I love the program so much. I've heard about programs before, but never once thought about it. This is the only one that I have accepted. And I've also talked to my other brothers, and they told me about how they went to all these other programs, and it worked for a little while, but then they lost track. They wasn't focused on God and everything, and how they fell back into it. So that part, for me, is very important. And I've seen a lot of people come. I've seen a few people graduate. And like Travis said, a lot of those that graduate and stick with Jesus are very successful, and I also want to be one of them. And I'm not that far from it. And I just thank Hope Center for giving me the ability to be here, to do this, to learn these things. And not only that, like, the work ethic, when we're out there doing what we're doing, we don't care about that. We're providing for our family, or being the man that we're supposed to be. But when you read your Bible, and your Bible tells you what you're supposed to do, and you submit to all those things, and allows you to be just what you're supposed to be. So I thank them for that, too. And not only that, I have a stability. I'll have a job. Once I get out, I'll have a place to go. I'll have my life back on track. But I just wanted to thank y'all for that.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else that would like to speak?
My name's Jonathan Rigney. I live at 6871 Ibersburg Road, Axton, Virginia. That's the Axton campus. So I've been in addiction for probably about 20 years. I was raised right. My dad was a pastor. I was active in church. And I still fell victim to drugs. Man, what these guys essentially are trying to do is give us and me there too, I'm in first phase, so I'm over the guys when they're first coming in. So the first 42 days, they spend their time with me. I've been there since April 19th of this year. And what we do is we pour into those guys and try to give them Jesus. We try to teach them, disciple them. And then after 42 days, they go out to vocational training. Now, when they go out to vocational training, they're still in the world. There's stuff out there. It's, it's, it's out there everywhere you go. So we're trying to equip these guys so they can go out and be productive in their vocational trainings at wherever they go. We're trying to make them leaders. And we're trying to show them the leadership example that Jesus Christ gave us. Because they have to be leaders in their homes. I'll have to be a leader in my home when I leave. I have to be a leader wherever I go. But I just say that to say this, like, it's anybody, it doesn't matter what kind of family you come from. You're always susceptible to, to addiction. It's, it's a monster. It's an epidemic out here. I'll never forget, it was probably about seven weeks ago, we have our family support on Friday night. And my mother came and we were sitting in the office area and she just started crying. I said, Mom, why are you crying? And she said, I'm so glad. I just don't have to worry about where you're at. I've OD'd twice. My mom told me she used to have to come in there and check to see if I was still breathing in the middle of the night before she could go to sleep. I went months. There were spaces of time that months went by where my family didn't even see me. And when you're active in addiction, you don't think about anybody but yourself and drugs. That's it. But what these guys are trying to do is they're trying to give a place for the people from the community, when they have a son, a daughter, niece, nephew, grandson, granddaughter, whatever it is, where they know, they can lay their head down at night and say, I know my child is okay. I know my child is somewhere where somebody's pouring into them these principles that they need to carry on so that they can live a successful life through Jesus Christ. It's all through Jesus Christ. That's all I have to say.
John, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
What are some of the vocational training opportunities that you have?
It, it just, it changes from center to center. At Axton, we have two contracts. One is with West Windows in Martinsville, or the other one's in Martinsville as well. And that's Nationwide Homes.
Right.
But it differs from center to center.
Okay. Whatever's in the community and everything that...
Yes, sir. That's one of, that's one of the jobs of the director is to seek out and obtain vocational contracts.
Got it.
Yes, sir. Anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Mark Hall and I live in Selma, North Carolina, not far from here. And I serve as a director of the Goldsboro Campus, not far from here. And I, I've been involved in the addiction community in several ways over the last few years. Prior to joining Hope Center six months ago, I was with the Durham Rescue Mission for five years. And it was amazing when I worked there, some of you all may be familiar with it, when people from our area, meaning Harnett and Johnston and Sampson County, would come to the mission and visit me. And they knew I was commuting every day from Johnston County to Durham. They would say, I wish there was something like that in our communities. I wish there was something like that here, east of the triangle. And I'm thankful to say that was one of the reasons I joined Hope Center is because we now have that here for our residents. I also have the opportunity to teach classes at Duke University in regards to addiction and homelessness and incarceration. And I'm thankful to say that through programs like Hope Center and some others that are here in this area now, we're developing a really good recovery community. And as a father and a grandfather, one of the things I always use as a litmus test, because I do talk to other centers, I do talk to other places where men and women can go and seek help, whether they be a secular facility or a faith-based facility. And the litmus test, as I said, as a father or grandfather, is this. Somewhere I would want to take my son or daughter and place them in a program. And I'm very thankful to say, and it's not just because I'm with Hope Center, it wasn't a quick decision to leave where I was at, because that was a good program. I wanted to come here and do that. And I'm very thankful to say that I would be very comfortable and pleased as a parent of a child who possibly would have suffered from addiction to take them to Hope Center. And I base that on a lot of things. It's not just the program. I love the program that it is faith-based. But we have men who, men and women who come to our centers and they're not believers, but they do work on themselves. And it's through, you know, what, what our hope and a prayer is that they do come to know Christ while they're within the program. But it is a good place for recovery. And the fact of the matter, and I think Travis shared, about 33% of our folks who start the program graduate from there. You know, I measure it on the time that they're there, because that's time that they're not on the street. It's time they're being addressed. It's time where the parents know where their children are, where their loved one is, where their husband is or where their wife is, and they're safe and they're resting. So it is a very good facility, a good home, a place. You know, I also look at the structures, the places where, where our centers are. These are beautiful homes. It's not an institutional look to it whatsoever. These are beautiful homes, because if I was that father bringing my son there, I'm asking my son to basically commit 12 months of his life to recovery. You want it to be a good, comfortable place. I was very impressed with the way that the houses were maintained and kept. They're, they're wonderful homes. They would be a place where I would, I would be happy having it down the street from me. But there again, I look at my community and then I look within my own family. If it would be, is it a place where I would want my child coming to or my spouse coming to, to seek help? And I'm very, very comfortable with it. And I'm proud and thankful to be with Hope Center. And I tell you what, it's amazing. I may be the oldest employee of Hope Center. And I love it, because, you know, I kid about it. If I get through a day without an emotional moment, it's because, it's only because Mark's not paying attention. I see good things happen. And you've seen some of those examples tonight. And, you know, as a citizen of this area, I'm not of Dunn. I'm not even of this county, but I'm from a neighboring county. And my prayer is that we have several centers in this area over the coming years. And I appreciate it. I, I want to touch on one thing, Mr. Turnage, that you asked about vocational training and the type of programs we have. And I can only give you an example of what we're doing in, in Goldsboro with Wayne County. We have a wonderful relationship with the community college there. Our men are completing tomorrow night. They're graduating from a 10-week life skills class, which covered everything from, from the simple things that we think are simple of interviewing and resume, how to fill in those gaps, you know, how to use transferable skills, maybe skills they learned while they were incarcerated or why they were in a program like that, and transferring them to use every day. And I'll give you an example. If somebody says, oh, I've never had a job. I've only worked in the prison kitchen. But they were there for two years or three years. They've been in the food service business and they've been working with two or three people, two or 300 people a day providing meals. We work on the resume writing. We work on the interviewing. We work on parenting skills. We also help provide a gateway and show them how to continue their education, whether it be needing to get their GED or completing some college credits. We work on that. Each quarter, we have our men, or the women if they choose to, take courses such as a two Saturdays in a row of forklift certification class. There's auto mechanics. We're starting in January with an eight-month, or excuse me, an eight-week class in basic welding. Because we have men who are in our vocational training program who are doing that at what's called Turner Tanks. And they're learning to weld. They're learning logistics. They're learning warehousing. So there, it's constant. That's a big part of our program. It is a discipleship program. We focus on addiction. We focus on a lot of other things so that they can have a sustainable life and support themselves and their families. We also talk about credit. We talk about finances and financial matters. We're all the time bringing in different speakers, trying to build those relationships and all. But are there any questions?
Mark, one quick question about follow-up. You know, of 33% success rate that you've had, what is a requirement by Hope Ministry or to follow up with those candidates that have gone through the 12-month process and have moved on and taken some of those life skills and applying them somewhere else?
Those are the wonderful stories I like to share about. And oftentimes, our alumni, the ones who do graduate from the programs, they become our volunteers. They're the inspiration for the men who are in the program. And so they are very active with it. But we have people out there that have, have gone on to do all sorts of things in life. And as Travis said, I think it was 68% are what we would say successful, meaning sober, productive citizens. So we do do that. The other thing too, and one of the things that was very attractive with Hope Center, and I've seen this with other ministries of this type too, the men that are sitting in here that are current residents of Hope Center, you know, what our prayer is, is that they will grow up, because we teach a lot of leadership skills. We teach a whole lot of leadership skills. We have a workshop that we were doing every Saturday morning with the men. And, you know, what the hope and the prayer is, is that they will be the future leaders of Hope Center. We hire men and women who complete the program and have 18 months and 24 months of sobriety where they've proven themselves and they're working on it. They become the next recovery coordinators, the next directors, the next community leaders. We have a strong apprenticeship program and an internship program. So that is part of their future. You'll find oftentimes that people who have lived experiences and have been touched by things such as addiction or homelessness or incarceration, sometimes they become the most valuable asset to any organization as far as leadership. You know, we can go to the finest universities in the country and learn all about leadership, but it's that lived experience that makes it rich. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
What about the 67% that don't make it through the program?
Okay. I'll touch on that. You know, one of the things we, we do is we really try to vet the folks that come into our doors. We have an admissions coordinators and they work with the court systems. They work with the churches. They work with the folks in the communities. That's where referrals come from. And as a director, when they bring somebody to us, I look at that person as a candidate. It doesn't mean they're a resident yet. And there are some hard questions we have to ask people. There's lots of people that need recovery, but not everybody wants it. They've got to be ready. And so we, you know, that's, that's one of the, one of the areas. But the ones that don't make it, and this is something, even when I was at the mission, we had a 12-month program there called the Victory Program. And we would have two graduations a year and it was men and women. They went through similar type programs. And what I tell people, when people will leave for various reasons, it's not always a dismissal because of a disciploring issue. It's because of a call back home. It's because of health. It's because of lots of situations. But my prayer and my goal is that the time that they're there, whether they're there for two days or they're there for eight months and decide to leave, that they, that some seeds were planted in them, that that was a positive time in their life, that was part of their journey. Maybe they didn't walk across the stage and get that certificate and that diploma and the gift. But during that time, my prayer is that they're getting some seeds in them that will help them go home. Whether, and I tell the guys, when somebody does decide to leave, and like I said, it can be lots of different reasons. It can be called, it can be due to a situation at home where they need a, what I would call a breadwinner back in the home, where they go back and they're successful. We have people who have not completed the program and they're doing well. And I've also seen in programs and where men walk across the stage or women walk across the stage and they get that diploma and they still haven't got what they needed. Does that make sense? So I tell the men, when they leave, you know, don't look at this as throwing in the towel. It's not throwing in the towel. Like I said, the intention is when men and women come to the center is that they're getting everything they need that day that they're there. The hope and the prayer is that they give themselves that 12 months. And for this, for a program like ours, our retention rate is very strong. Other questions? I appreciate y'all's time and thank y'all.
Mark?
Yes?
Your last name again?
Paul, H-A-L-L.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the floor is still open. If anyone else would like to speak?
I'm Wayne Barnett. I'm currently one of the residents of Hope Center Ministries. Every community in this country of ours, this great country of ours, I say a prayer for. And it's that each community needs a place like this. And I hope and pray that every community that's struggling in this country gets a place like this. I'm 108 days clean and it's the third rehab I've been in this year. This is Christ-based is the main reason why I'm still with this program. I lost my dad 10 years ago to an overdose. And I have a mother currently. I'm trying to get into the women's house of Hope Center Ministries. It's, it's tough as a family to, you know, deal with that. But the family I have right now is 20, 23 other brothers that's in the house with me. And I'm committed to 12 months to this program and longer. I want to help out this community because, you know, police and first responders need an extra hand. And a place like this will give them relief to get an epidemic at least, put it in check and keep it at a minimum to the best, to the best of their abilities. And with people like us that's in the center, in a center like this, you know, wanting to change, it will make you a better man or woman or what have not, you know, whatever the case may be. And I'm committed to internship and I do, and like I said, I would like to focus on this community because I am originally from Goldsboro and I have a heart for helping out my community. It needs help so bad. This area needs it so bad right now. And I just hope and pray that, like I said, all communities get this type of program. Thank you, guys.
Okay, there's still opportunity if anyone else would like to speak? Okay, hearing or seeing no one else that would like to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point. And the procedure will now be for our board to go over this and be, you know, ask questions and make some decisions based upon information that we have. And fortunately, we have legal counsel here, so if there are any questions that you may have for Tillman. So at this time, a public hearing is closed and I'll open the school, the floor for discussion.
I guess this one's for George. What are existing ordinances and our existing six locations with around Dunn? How does this impact those currently in, in action?
This location out on 55 is if you do a point and then have a half-mile radius, it would be clear of others. So that location at present. radius, it would be clear of others. So that location at present would be, would meet those requirements.
But the ones that we currently have, except for one that I'm familiar with, could not hold thirty people. The houses that are there right now couldn't hold thirty people. So if the request, if this is completely different than that, is that what, is that what's being proposed, is keep what we have now at the twelve, have another one ordinance that allows for up to thirty?
Yes. So there'd be, that'd be two separate uses.
Right. So the ones that could go up to thirty existing, for instance, and the only one we could think of earlier was the Beacon Rescue Mission, and I don't think it has that much either. It could go up to thirty if this, but they would have to change the code, I mean, the...
They would have to go through a rezoning.
Right, a rezoning.
And a special use permit.
Right.
And I think that they would probably find that it would not meet the half-mile radius.
Right, okay.
So the size of the, in this case, on the site that Hope Center has purchased, there is no property, or there is no improvement. So they would need to build one.
Right. So this is a completely new, existing, not, it doesn't exist right now?
Right. There's no, there's no building on the site.
Okay.
So they would have to, the first thing, if they wanted, if they wanted to complete this, they would need to come back, I think, for a conditional rezoning to RM with one condition, that it would, the site would only be for a transitional housing dormitory.
Right.
Then they would have to, and then once the planning board and the city council reviewed that, if it were passed, then they would have to come with a development permit and construction permits. And Stephen is here, and he could tell you more about the code regarding, it would probably need to be commercial standard because it's for thirty people. And I'm not sure exactly the arrangements they have, but it would need to meet our code.
Is this address in the city limits or in the ETJ?
This one, I believe, is in the ETJ.
Okay.
This parcel.
But the request is for a change in definition. That's really what we're here tonight.
That's right, that's right. We're not, we're not, the, all of those questions, though they're good ones, are kind of separate from this particular discussion. And again, we're not changing anything. The request is to add a definition.
Right.
I have a question. If they were, if they were going to build the facility and it was going to house twelve people in treatment, would it have to come before this board, like we're doing tonight?
Yes. Because it would, it would have to, there's only three zoning districts that that use is allowed in. And in each of those, it requires a special use permit, which would come to council.
Mr. Mayor, that might be helpful to put this in some context for the council. So you're not considering tonight, this organization, or this program, or the services that they provide, you are not evaluating the specific location of where they want to put this facility. You are evaluating whether or not you want to add this definition to your code, which would not just apply to this organization, but would apply to any organization that meets the criteria in this definition and the half-mile radius, anywhere in town that would be appropriately zoned for such a facility to go. So this is, this is a code amendment. This is not you considering the Hope Center and the services it provides, or the specific location. This, once it's in your code, it applies to any organization that meets a specific criteria that would want to put this type of facility, which would still have to come back to you for a rezoning and a conditional use permit, the same as the Hope Center's location would. So this is no different than any other code amendment that you have considered in the past. It applies to the whole town and all people and all organizations, so not specific to the group that's spoken to you this evening.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members?
I want to clarify this, you said half-mile rule, is that we should clarify that one more time for a moment, please?
You take, the address would be a point, and you extend out a half-mile in each direction and draw a circle. And another such facility could not be within that circle.
I would think we'd be in violation of that right now with the Beacon Rescue Mission and the one on Leighton Street.
Some have been there for some time.
Yeah. So they're grandfathered in to that? Okay.
I think the transitional housing code and some of the other codes that he's been referencing for smaller facilities were put in place probably six or eight years ago in adding a couple of definitions and some clarifications due to, due to some general statute changes. But those, a lot of those facilities have, you know, been in those locations for a long time. And even when we were coming up with the distances, you know, we found that, you know, there was some overlap there, but, you know, and when we came up with those definitions and changed some of those things, it was just accepted that, you know, this is going to be, you know, creating some non-conformities in the code due to their age and, you know, status, that they've been in existence for some time.
And just for clarification, I think they're asking for, potentially to build a facility that would house thirty people, but in this code change, they're asking for up to thirty-five people.
Yeah.
That's what's written there.
Well, that's just it. This code is in their letter, which is fine. Obviously, they've done their research and everything. But what is our definition of transitional, what do you recommend our? Our definition of transitional housing dormitories, obviously, they've got these in other cities, and this is probably the go-to definition for transitional housing dormitories. Would ours be any different than this?
Well, actually, that language is the same as the, it's somewhat unfortunate. Transitional housing facility is up to twelve, transitional housing dormitory up to thirty. But the language is actually taken from our code.
Okay.
And, but it was changed from twelve to thirty. That's basically the difference.
So that's, that's correct. In the letter part, it says thirty, but in the, in the code here, it says thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Well, that would be, I believe that thirty is the number that was always talked about. And I think that if, but you can make, I would, I would suggest that you decide on that.
Yeah. And if I had a, if I had a facility that could house twelve people, let's say on a city block in Dunn, I said, okay, I want to go to thirty. Obviously, there's going to be some housing requirements, and there's going to be some things that inspections and whatnot. You can't just say, oh, we're going to jump from twelve to thirty tomorrow.
No.
Because we can't, obviously, there's going to be some.
You can't because you would have to go through the rezoning.
Correct.
And in addition to the structural improvements, you would have to, you'd have to go through the rezoning so that a facility like this is not going to suddenly appear. It's going to have to come through and be for you all to consider.
Any further questions for George, questions for Tillman, city manager? Is this something the board wants to move and make a decision on at this time, or opening the floor for discussion or a motion on how the board would like to proceed?
Okay, if we make the motion, the ordinance amendment OA-1021 is prescribed to add the definition of transitional, what is it, the definition in their letter, or is, what is, what is our definition yet? And that's not it. Or do we just change the thirty-five to thirty?
That's what, that's what I would say.
Everything else reads the same.
Everything else reads the same. And you can see that in the RM special use after that, the definition, it specifies the location where it is allowed. And that's in RM for the special use.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment OA-10-21 as presented to add the definition of transitional housing dormitory allowed only in the RM district as a special use, and the number be changed to thirty occupants versus thirty-five.
Okay, you've heard a motion from council member Turnage. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by council member Tark. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. You folks, thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight, and you're welcome to stay as long as you'd like to. We've got, I think, seven more public hearings. Welcome to stay and hear them out if you'd like to, or you could be dismissed.
There's just too much oversight for this to be done. I mean, if it was in the middle of Dunn, where they're going now, it's almost like they, it's a controlled environment. And you didn't see anybody coming and speaking and opposing it, the neighbors or anything. That's what I expected. That's exactly what I was thinking.
Okay, knowing we have several public hearings, I'm going to, at this time, call Stephen King. If you would come to the front, to the podium. We're going to, we're going to have an ordinance to demolish a structure at four zero seven North Elm Avenue. And at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing and call on Stephen King for his report.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Four zero seven North Elm Avenue significantly burned, as you can tell from the pictures. There's not much left. Not sure of the cause, but it is beyond repair. We did reach out to the owners on record, which is M.E. Scott Hares, care of Anthony Cordell Scott, which comes back to that address. And we also got another Hares name by the name of Yolanda Scott. We contacted her, first-class certified mail. They received the letters. We got certified card back. Have not heard anything about any type of repairs. The only question I had from Ms. Scott was why the city did not auction this property off prior to it burning. And that's something that we cannot do. So I don't think they have any interest in fixing it. I think pretty much the only interest would be to have this property demolished.
I think it's already halfway there, huh?
Yes, right. Is anyone in the audience to speak in favor or against this demolition? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the floor for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt the demolition, the ordinance to demolish the structure located at four seven North Elm Avenue, pin number fifteen sixteen eight seven one six three six point zero zero zero.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by council member Seals, second by council member Turnage. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen is ordinance to demolish a structure at five zero eight East Wake Street. And at this time, I'll open a public hearing on this matter and call on Stephen King for his report.
Yes, this house has been on our list to go by and do an inspection on to see if it's salvageable after inspection of the property. We determined it is not. It's going to take a lot of work. Most of the interior is completely rotten. The second floor level in some areas has collapsed down to the first floor level. Caught in a hearing with Mr. Curtis McCoy, which is the son of the late Augusta McCoy. He come in, we had our hearing. He has no interest in fixing the property and would like us to tear it down. I asked him, you know, typically, we give sixty days. I said, we can reduce that to thirty, just to move it along a little quicker. And he said thirty days is just fine. So they have no interest in repairing the property, and in my opinion, it's too far gone.
Okay, is anyone in the audience to speak in favor against this, this demolition? Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public hearing on this matter and open the floor for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt the ordinance to demolish the structure located at five zero eight East Wake Street, pin number fifteen sixteen nine nine seven one seven zero point zero zero zero.
Motion by council member Seals, second by council member McLean. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen is an ordinance to demolish a structure at one twenty-four East Broad Street. And I'll open a public hearing on this matter and call on Mr. King.
Yes, one twenty-four East Broad Street, one hundred block of East Broad in between Red House Interiors and Jordan's Jewelry. We done an inspection and had a hearing with Mr. Wiley, Dean Wiley is the owner. Kind of went over everything that, that he could do legally as far as appeal our, my decision as far as the sixty days. He did appeal the decision. We notified him of that hearing. He did not show up for the appeal hearing before y'all. That was back in September. So now his allowable time period of sixty days is expired. I have not had any contact with Mr. Wiley. Have not been able to do a reinspection. Do not know of any repairs that have been made. No permits have been applied for or issued. And as far as I know, the building is just as bad, possibly worse than what it was when we first went in there back in June. So this time is, is time is up, and we have put before you a, and... So this time is, time is up and we have put before you a, an ordinance to demolish this structure.
Stephen, is it two separate buildings? It used to be a barber, a long, long time ago.
Yeah.
There's a barber shop on the right side and something else on the left side.
Yes, a one twenty-four AMB.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yep. With one twenty-four, it covers, it's under one pin number.
Okay, alright.
So it's going to cover both sides.
Alright.
The entire parcel of land.
Just a quick question. How would you go about demolishing it?
Couple different ways.
Does it happen upstairs?
It does, I think. I did not go upstairs. Based on the downstairs.
Since later. Since later, for the hell of it.
Did not venture upstairs. But something like this would probably have to be private contracted out, third-party contractor come in and actually remove the interior elements of the building while leaving the exterior, like the wall, the front wall, the back wall, and, you know, repairing the roof. If we did that, that would obviously be a city expense in which we would turn around and put a lien on the property, just like we would if we were to tear down the whole building. So, you know, the lien would still be there if, if that's the route that administration and Public Works and, you know, wanted to go.
Now, these have adjoining buildings, you're right. You got the-
That's correct.
Red House and you got the Jordan's Jewelers and everything.
That is correct.
They are being affected right now. I've talked to both of them.
They are.
Their walls, their walls are, you can see the deteriorate, or the saturation of the walls. So the quicker we can get it down, the better. But I guess for, and we've all seen it in New Bern and everything, it would be an excellent place for, you know, but it, it wouldn't need a ceiling. So what, when we demolish it, does the ceiling come down and everything comes down? And it'd just be a-
Yeah, I mean, it could, yes. I mean, that would be a-
Now, does it go all the way back to the parking lot?
It does not. It's kind of, you got a back area and it's kind of boxed in by other buildings. So once you go into the back, there's really nowhere to go. Let me look at the GIS, just to make sure I'm right on that. There may be an access there, but it would, it would be a very small. There's a building on Wilson that goes down beyond his building and that would-
Oh, the back side.
Kind of be like a little-
Probably the jewelry store on Wilson.
Possibility.
Yeah, because the next, where the parking lot is, where the movie theater, the Dunn Theater used to be.
Okay.
And so the next building up from that is the jewelry shop, Priscilla Bryant's Jewelry Shop. And then, then you've got the venue, the wedding venue there.
Correct. Correct. Yep.
Stephen, if you went in there, if we decided to do it, you gut the inside, there would still be water coming through the ceiling, the roof, right? Unless it was repaired. So-
Yeah.
If we go in there and tear it out, then we would have to fix the roof.
Right.
We'd still be damaging the other business.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I think that would be part of it, is trying to repair the roof to prevent damage from the adjoining buildings.
Well, I'm just saying, if we didn't gut it, we-
Nor-
We tore out the inside, but-
Yeah.
The roof was still leaking, so we really hadn't accomplished a whole lot.
Right.
And we can't stop the leaks.
Yep.
It'd be better if-
I think there'd be several different ways we could go about it. And, you know, I would consult with City Manager on the best route. And I'm sure he would consult with y'all.
Stephen, would that be at our expense, right?
Yes, sir. Any removal, demolition, repair?
I mean, we can, hopefully recoup it and everything, but initially it would be on ours. And like Stephen said, it would, obviously some third party would have to go in and do that, not us.
Right. There's, there's various legal routes the city could take with the property. But I've seen it done both ways. I think it depends on the floor, if the floor is, the first floor is concrete or if it's on a crawl space. But I've seen it where they just got the whole inside of the building and leave it so that it drains out. But I've also seen downtowns that have done the same thing. They've put a temporary roof up to keep the water, you know, from shedding, but it might not be the permanent roof. So, you know, while it's in transition and being repaired or whatever, the fate of the building is-
I guess it'd be a question for Steve or Tillman. If we were to move to demolish this, is there a timeframe that we can go ahead and put it back on the market for sale to recoup our money instead of waiting ten years like some of the other properties or twenty?
Well, you have to, you have to get title to it first. So once you tear it down, you just have a lien. And then we have to go through a whole tax foreclosure. And then assuming the city's the one that buys, somebody else might buy it with a tax foreclosure and then you get your money back.
What I'm talking about, get our money back. That's the main thing.
Right. But if you end up, if you end up the high bidder at the tax foreclosure, once the tax foreclosure is completed, you can put it right on the market.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying, most of the-
Or keep it and do something with it yourself. That's what the-
Yeah, well, most time we tear a building down, that's it. But now if we have to go spend money to repair the roof, that's a little different, is what I'm saying. I hate to see the city put that money in there and then sit there for twenty years.
That's right.
So after the repairs are done and the work's done and the lien is placed, is there a time period before you can do a tax foreclosure? Is there a time period that has to pass before you can file for?
Yeah, there's a notice requirement to the property owner once the lien's been established before you can initiate the procedure, just like past due taxes. But I think it's like sixty days. I mean, it's not years.
So you don't have to wait?
Well, I guess that's my question, if we'd have to spend money on it, I'd rather see it, you know, the property owner have it fixed herself. But if not, then I'd hate to see us, you know, on the hood for money for ten years or more.
But the first step is to condemn it tonight.
Yeah.
And then do that stuff at the December, January meeting?
Well, it really wouldn't have to come back to council once the ordinance is adopted. Once the ordinance is adopted, then I'm pretty much out of it. It's a done deal. So how it was perceived from there would be y'all's decision.
Yeah, we'd probably get quotes, you know, similar to-
And city admin, right, as far as-
Similar to demolishing a building, we'd get quotes and then-
Right, yeah.
You know, we award a low bidder based on, you know, what the council's wishes are.
Right. But it necessarily wouldn't have to come back before council for this part.
Okay, any further questions at this time for board members? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this demolition? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. And I would tell the board that one of Mr. Wiley's friends contacted me today and said he had a desire to fix the building and, and he was working on some, some things to do that and proposals and that sort of thing. But I have not spoken with Mr. Wiley. But I did tell his friend that I would tell the board that I was contacted by then. So at this point, I would open the floor for a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt the ordinance to demolish the structure located at one twenty-four East Broad Street, pin number fifteen sixteen six seven four one three three point zero zero zero.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Seals, second by Councilmember Bratton. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen is a demolition of a structure at two one three North Lee Avenue in Dunn. And I will open a public hearing on this matter and call on Mr. King for his report.
Yes, two thirteen North Lee Avenue. We done an inspection on that based on a complaint from the tenant, previous tenant. He was still living there at the time when we went in. This structure had a lot of structural deficiencies. I don't know if y'all can tell in that picture, but that's a two-foot level and it drops about two foot. So that's about the same slope as the handicap ramp. So that's how far the floor has, has settled. And that's one room. There was multiple rooms like that. Now, this is after they had tore out the front floor section to figure out what was causing that. As you can see, severe decay, termite damage. Pretty much that whole floor would need to be replaced, as well as a couple of other rooms. I've been working with Mr. Henry Muns and Mr. John Fitzpatrick on this property over the past sixty days. They did submit an appeal, but there's a ten-day appeal process window they have to meet and they appealed it out of that ten-day window, so we cannot honor that appeal. And I told him, you know, he would just need to keep working and try to bring it up if he wanted to save the house. They did get a permit on October sixth to do repairs. The valuation of those repairs was six thousand dollars, as far as what they were thinking they would spend in repairs. After tearing out the floor system and looking at it, I actually got a call from Mr. Fitzpatrick today and he said that the family and the Hares and stuff, the Ms. Rachel Brinkley, are not interested in fixing this house. It would be too much money. More money than what they would want to put in the house and for us to go ahead and tear it down.
Makes it easy.
Okay, as you've heard his report and the owner's request, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or against this demolition? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on this matter and open the floor for a motion on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt the ordinance to demolish the structure located at two thirteen North Lee Avenue, pin number fifteen sixteen nine five five eight two four point zero zero zero.
Motion by Councilmember Seals, second by Councilmember McLean. Any further discussion?
Six thousand dollars.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving now to item sixteen, is an ordinance to demolish a structure at three zero six West Granville Street in Dunn. I'm going to open a public hearing on this matter and call on Mr. King for his report.
Yes, three oh six West Granville Street. As you can see from our original pictures, from back in August, whenever we first started this process, up until October twenty-eighth, which was the last status update prior to me having to turn in my agenda items to the city clerk. Nothing much has changed with this property. This is a, the owner is Duncan Deals LLC. Mr. Peter Gitto is in the audience. If you have any questions for him. His plans for this is to have it demolished. He has secured a demolition permit, had the asbestos report done, all of the asbestos has been removed. His, his intention is to have this house demolished himself. And we were hoping that it would kind of be demolished prior to this, the sixty days expiring. But being it's not, then I've had to bring it to council for the ordinance, just in case if, if something don't work out on his end, then we can still demolish it. But it is his intentions to demolish it on his own.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. King? Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor or against? Please state your name for us, please.
Peter Gitto, G-I-T-T-O, seventy-three twenty, Bassett Alcourt, Raleigh, North Carolina. So the dumpsters are out there if you want by tonight. The dumpsters are there. We'll be demoing. We had to wait for the gas line to get terminated in the street. And since it's the city street, it had to get marked. So we're waiting for the gas line to get terminated. So you couldn't demo the house until the gas line got terminated. I didn't want it to blow up. So dumpsters are out there. I'll have it demoed hopefully by the end of the week. If not, it'll be next week. And I'll build a new one.
Good. Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor or against this demolition? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on this matter and I will open the floor for a motion on this matter.
Should we just table it so we don't lose all the work we've done and not have to come back here?
You could table or take action, could we not?
You, you can adopt the ordinance and then if the property owner demolishes it themselves within the next thirty days, because they've got thirty days before you could act on it anyway, then you'll need to rescind the ordinance because they will have then complied with what you told them to do. Or you could table it till December and based on what he says, if it's down by then, then you can just vote it down because it will have been complied with, one, one of the other.
So either way, we're going to talk about it twice?
Either way, you got to talk about it twice.
Having a demolition ordinance on the property doesn't hurt a credit rating or construction loan or anything like that that the business may want.
Until you rescind it, it does. Not, not necessarily a credit for the property owner, but it's, nobody's going to loan money against that property if the ordinance is pending against it. And I, you know, now that I'm thinking about it, if you ta, if you tabled it and he demolishes it, then he has complied with your order.
Correct.
And it wouldn't even have to come back to council because at that point, the order would have been complied with.
Yeah.
So that might, that might-
Yeah. And then I wouldn't have to bring it back twice.
And then you wouldn't have to bring it back twice. So that might be, if it's going to come down to the next week or two, that might save you some time if you just table it till December. And if it happens that way, then you're done with it.
I'm fine with that. Mr. Mayor, move to table the ordinance to demolish the structure located at three oh six West Granville Street, pin number fifteen sixteen seven zero three six four zero point zero zero.
Until December?
Until the December council meeting.
Motion by Councilman Seals to table this item until the December meeting, second by Mr. McLean. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen is an ordinance to demolish a structure at eight zero nine B East Edgerton Street. And at this time, I'll open a public hearing and call on Mr. King for his comments.
Yes, eight oh nine B East Edgerton, you may remember this from last month, where he appealed the sixty-day decision. City Council unanimously voted to affirm the sixty days that was originally given. On October twenty-first, a renovation permit was applied for. In the property history, it says, you know, as of when I had to get my information to Tammy, the permit had not been paid for yet. Since then, it has been paid for. So he does have an, an active renovation permit to renovate this dwelling. As far as the progress, I haven't noticed much progress since the last month. I mean, he did go in and clean it, cleaned it up, the exterior, cut the grass, boarded it up to prevent unauthorized access. When we first went into this house, we had three people that were sleeping in the house, so we had to have them removed. But as far as I know, nobody else has, has been, you know, varicose and stuff have not been accessing this house, so. But as far as any improvements, I'm not sure of any. The permit was just issued, so, or just paid for, so therefore it was a valid permit. No inspections have been done at this point. He may be able to speak on what has been done inside the dwelling, because I've not been back to do a reinspection on the inside. So if you'd like to ask him any questions.
What was included in the permit?
Just a residential renovation of the whole house, electrical, mechanical plumbing. Pretty much based on his other houses that, that he has done, he completely guts them. And, I mean, a lot of times they have- So this is, this is the property at the rear. Um, I've got a little star there. I don't know if you can see it, but I've got a star on the actual property that it is, uh, or the, the actual house that it is, but there are two houses on that one parcel, yes. There's eight oh nine A at the front, eight oh nine B at the back, and this is pertaining to the rear.
Good. Anyone like to speak in favor or against this ordinance?
Can you say again?
Please.
Peter Jito, G.I.T.T.O., seventy-three twenty, Bassett Hall Court, Raleigh, North Carolina, two seven six one six. So this one is the, one of the other ones I talked to you guys about last month. So I do have a building permit, uh, I pulled it, um, and Stephen can attest, as he has, to the twenty or so plus section, probably thirty-plus building permits I've got now active and done or completed and done. I stand by my word, I do my work. I just have an order of operations. I bought sixty junk homes and it takes a little while to take from March to now to turn them all around. I've got three or four crews that are working in Dunn every single day, so I've, I, I'll be okay if you table this for maybe two months, if you want to keep the table and then we can come back and see if I'm actually working on it and then you can remove the ordinance. Um, my plan is, I just was out today at another one that he has a permit on and we've got a house falling over, so I'm going to have to go to that one and do that. And I'm finishing up, he has six inspections for me tomorrow before Friday and another couple on Friday for him to do for me. So this one's gonna be started next week or the week after, but I literally have a house that's falling, so I'm gonna have to go make that stand up. So I'm asking you to, if you want to table it, that'd be the best way, I think, to go about it. Um, I, I, you guys look at these and you see this, I see a duplex and I can't get a duplex back. So I've read your ordinance backwards, inwards, outwards. I would demo it if I could get a duplex back. You guys added twenty thousand square feet minimum lots for duplexes. That's the vast majority of the surrounding neighborhood. I understand that's not what you want for your zoning code, so I can't knock down houses. Trust me, I knock them down. I, I'm gonna go knock down that one that's fallen over, um, because it did a lot, it's not a duplex now, so I can't get a duplex, I'll just knock it down. Um, but this is a duplex, that's another tenant for me and another money for you guys as far as valuation for two good fixed-up homes versus one fixed-up home for a rental. So that's why I don't demo duplexes or triplexes.
I was looking at the, the picture earlier, I mean, the other slide that had the, um, the aerial photo.
Sure.
How do you get in to that?
So it's that, I don't, that's gonna be an access easement? I don't know who owns that. I, maybe I do, I, I, not, I don't know everything I own, so I, maybe I own that, but no matter what, it would be an access easement because that house, that driveway goes back to that, so.
Well, I see it does, but it looks like it goes over the property.
I don't, I think that's mine, too. Um, but, I don't know. I once was working on a house and I found out I owned the house right around the corner. I bought sixty-eight homes, so.
When you just bought it, auctioned on the courthouse?
No, I didn't. You guys, I mean, he can attest to who I bought it from. There was a guy, they had a lot of problems, you guys had these orders out and I bought them all from one, two owners. I bought, I'll bring in, I'll bring you guys a major site development soon, uh, for, uh, lots that I bought that I'm gonna do. Obviously, I know you're in the moratorium, I understand that. I've been trading, I, I've, I've got the system down, I just, I need time. You can't, you can't do them all at once. I mean, if I was Warren Buffett, I could.
My thought would be, what you need to know, if you have a, a access or if you owned the lot before you guys spent the money on this house?
Yeah, so, uh, I, I, the, I would get, so, access to it, I'm not an attorney, but it's been there, it's been established and they would have to go and go after it. If not, I can figure out, I mean, I don't think, I think I'll be able to get it, though it looks closer on there, in real life, it's not as close as that. So, I mean, this is part of the game that I have to play, that I play every day there.
Well, the, the problem is, we have been lied to before.
We talked about that.
And, you know, I'm married, I don't need to be lied to anymore, so.
I, 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 I don't get married, so I don't have to lie.
And also, we have a problem with people who'll spend a few thousand bucks here, take a summer off, spend a few thousand more dollars.
Yeah.
Then, two years later, we're still tabling the same property.
Sure.
I got a problem with that.
Uh, understood. I'm at a million dollars at Lowe's that I've spent, you can go look, uh, call them up. So I'm not spending a little bit amount of money at Dunn. Uh, this is, this is no small operation, Stephen can attest. I have done new cabinets, new kitchens, new plumbing, new electrical in twenty-plus houses that were much like those. That one that you saw, that was like, dang, I'd buy that right now. So before you guys knock it down, you'll knock it down, knock it down. But, uh, the, this is what I do for a living, so, you know, just can't, you, you can take my word, he can attest to how many building permits I have. It's not just my word, and I've closed, not just taken, I've actually closed.
So you want two months?
Yeah, and then we'll come back and you could see that they'll, he'll be able to go out there, he'll let you know that inspection's been pulled and stuff has started. I'm not gonna get into this and go, oh my gosh. If I get into this and go, oh my gosh, you'll be on the ground before you know it.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor or against this item? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Um, Steve, I know that, uh, at, at one time, Stephen, we had a situation with someone that was requesting to renovate two houses on the same lot. Is, and I think we ran into a legal.
Yes.
Situation like that and we required, possibly required, one of the houses to be torn down. Do you recall that? I know we've looked at a lot of this stuff and.
That was Curtis, Curtis Miles' house.
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, on East Carr Street.
So my question is, the legality of the two houses on the, on the same lot, when you get into something that has to have this amount of renovation work, is, is it legal?
Um.
Or of course.
That has not been too long ago either. It was a year, maybe, year and a half.
Yeah.
But Curtis did a fantastic job on that property there.
Yes, he did, he really did. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, we, we could, I mean, he could renovate it, but, um, I'm not sure where zoning would, would fall into that category. Maybe George could help me out on that.
Uh, yeah, the only thing I'm going back in my memory banks from the last one is, we talked about, you know, the non-conforming status of, of the house and when does that non-conforming status, you know, expire? You know, because obviously.
Right, right.
You know, and, and when I say non-conforming, I mean grandfathered it. At some point, um, and, and I believe, I believe it was, you know, due to the condition of the home that once it was deemed condemnable, which is beyond fifty percent of the value, if that's right.
Yep.
Um, then it basically lost its non-conforming status. Um, and I think that's kind of the direction we took the, the last time, but there was multiple, yeah, there was.
My, my recollection from that one is both houses were condemned.
No, that's right, yeah. It was two houses.
And he wanted to renovate both of them, but that was not an option because they were both under condemnation at the same time.
That's right, yep. Two houses and a storage building was included in that condemnation.
I mean, we had a map and it was color coded, A, B, C.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah, because they were, yep, that's right.
Twitched a star as Mr. said.
Yeah, I should have relocated. But, uh.
Well, I paid for Mr. Jito to spend money that we're just gonna bulldoze because of, we have to, um, so, we just table it so you can speak to a lawyer?
Public hearing is closed, but we can briefly hear, hear your comments, certainly.
Yeah, so, explain to me, I, and I heard you speak, so from my understanding, from my attorney, my real estate attorney, the non-conforming status stays unless there's a city code specifically called out like in Oak Island, the non-conforming status goes away once you submit a renovation budget for fifty percent. That's laid out in their code, so that way you can't have this, where you can keep the non-conforming status forever, but unless it's specifically called out in your code, building code does not talk about non-conforming status at all, so it would be in your code, which would have to be in.
Yep, this is, this talks about having one primary structure on each parcel.
But it, it does, I won't, I won't, I don't wanna live it up, I don't wanna live it. So my, my question is, if it doesn't, then it not, if it does, it would be a non-conforming now, you would allow any other non-conforming to continue unless it doesn't state in your code when the non-conformity would have to stop? Because in Oak Island, they specifically call out, once you submit a building permit for over fifty percent, because all the houses get damaged by hurricanes, no one wants to bring them up to the state's code, they go, once you're over fifty thousand dollars, that's it, the non-conformity stops. They're, they're, they put it in their zoning code because people like me just kept working around them and saying, well, the non-conformity stays forever, because a grandfather, you can't get rid of your grandfather. The only way to get rid of your grandfather is specifically call out that you got rid of your grandfather.
And like I said, I'm trying to describe a situation that we dealt with about a year ago off the cuff. I'm not trying to say that this is.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry. I just didn't, it wasn't in your code yet, I was like, I got your code, I don't think that's in your code. It's a pretty specific thing, it only Oak Island and ours, a couple of the other ones have.
Well, we don't have, you know.
The, the reason I bring that up is I think that this board has done a good job at consistency and I want us to remain consistent in what we're doing. Uh, so what's fair for one is fair for the other. It may have been totally different circumstances, but, um, I did recall that there was a, you know, a property that Mr. Miles had that, that we did require one to be demolished due to the condition. So before I entertain any type of motion, do you have any legal advice on this too? Or how we should proceed on this particular one?
I mean, I, I, I mean, I, it's, it's already under an order that hadn't been complied with and if you want to adopt the ordinance, you can adopt the ordinance. Um, if you table it, it doesn't mean you can't adopt it in the future, but if you table it and he goes and spends twenty or thirty thousand dollars on it and before it comes, before it comes back to you, then that's a risk he's taking and something that you probably ought to consider knowing that there's two dwellings on the lot.
Why can't we, we table it for a month, even though he's asking for six, uh, for sixty days? But we need to find out about the two buildings on the, on the property, so we don't go through this again. We kind of understood the other circumstances. If this is entirely, if this is similar, then we need to be, like you said, be consistent in how we, uh, we adjudicate it, so.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we table the, uh, the adoption of the ordinance to, or this item, um, until the December meeting and then we find out about the uniqueness of, or the circumstances with the two houses, eight hundred or eight oh nine A and B.
And that information we brought, will be brought thus prior to the next meeting.
Right.
We have time to view it.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Turner, second from Councilmember Seals. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of tabling this item until our next council meeting in December, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, one second to make a note here. Item eighteen is an ordinance to demolish four one one North McKay Avenue in Dunn. I'm gonna open a public hearing on this matter and call on Mr. King for this.
Uh, yes, sir. Four eleven North McKay, uh, it was held, or an appeal was, was held last month. Um, he appealed the one that we just, that you just went and voted on and this one as well. Um, this one is pretty much in the same boat as the other one, uh, as far as the work that's been done and the permit status. Uh, he has issued, a permit has been issued and paid for, um, so he does have an active permit. I know he mentioned, uh, last month that he would, he was considering selling this one and I don't know, I don't think he sold.
Marking it.
Okay. So, um, Duncan Deals is still the legal owner of this property, um, and we're, it is kind of the same as, as that oh nine D. Um, his time is up and I'm not sure of many repairs that have been done, other than, uh, well, he's secured it to prevent unauthorized access, but I wouldn't consider that a repair. Um, but he has prevented people from going into it until he can, um, start a construction on it.
Okay, anyone like to speak on this matter?
Peter Jito, seventy-three twenty, Bassett Hall Court, Raleigh, North Carolina, two seven six one six. So this one is, now I'm gonna go back to that question you guys just posed, which is, does a non-conforming status go away based on a building permit being pulled and X number of amount of work being done? So that question you just brought up, I, it's a unique question because I've read your zoning code and I haven't seen it there, so I don't know where, I understand the idea of it, um, that's, that's what a lot of island communities have done, but I did not see that in your zoning code when I read it. So my intent was the same one, this was gonna take even longer, this is a much more substantial work than any of the other ones, but it, it's a triplex, so versus, uh, it's got three one-bedroom units in them, um, so versus what would be allowed there. I think I can get a duplex there, there's lies, the size of the lot is pretty large, but you couldn't get to a triplex. So it would be three one-bedroom units. Um, and, uh, to speak to your idea that not more than one single-family house is allowed on it, I do have other lots that I own that other single-family house lots are on and I pulled permits for, and I did the renovations and finished it. I split as many as I could, me and George were doing non-exempt plots, like as much as we could do, and then you guys created the ordinance about the regular lot size, which I now have to conform to, so I can't go around zigzag drawing lines, try to get around buildings. I've done that as much as I could, um, you guys created the ordinance for that. So this one, my goal is to fix it, but obviously my question comes back to you guys being, does a non-conforming status go away based on a building permit being pulled for X number So my request is to dismiss it, which seems to be, I, my buyer walked away, as I knew he would, no one's gonna buy a house with an ordinance on it, um, because the, the threat is there. You guys could just, one meeting decides you don't like the guy and pull the ordinance and the house goes down. It don't matter how much money the person spent, because as soon as you sign it, it's there. So if he misses a meeting, doesn't show up to a meeting, the ordinance is signed and I understand you guys have been lied to a lot, it's just, it's a difficult position for, for everybody, um, but that's where I'm at.
Were, you were the owner in, in August tenth when this process started, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, I've been the owner since, um, uh, March, I think, is when I bought all these. Obviously, none of these houses got to this condition from March of twenty twenty-one. They've been this way for as number of years as you can get. I mean, when I went to look at this house to buy it, the water line was broke, I had to get them out there, there was a, literally a swimming lake around it just pouring your water everywhere. So, I mean, these houses were in horrible condition by neglect from owners. That's not my intent, hasn't been my intent, it's not what I'm doing, but obviously I can't sell it to anybody if you leave an ordinance in place. I'll fit, I'll do it the fix now, because everybody I talked to was like, I'm not gonna do an ordinance, because the risk is what the attorney said, which is, you can, I should not show up to a meeting, I could spend fifty thousand dollars, it doesn't matter, as long as you could just pull the ordinance and do it. You've, in essence, it's been condemned. So it's a, I'll take a risk, but, I mean, that's, that's a big risk for other people to take.
Or you can also sue us and get an injunction.
Cur, again, I, I. I'll fit, I'll do it the fix now, because everybody I talked to was like, I'm not going to do an ordinance, because the risk is what the attorney said, which is, you can, I should not show up to a meeting, I could spend fifty thousand dollars, it doesn't matter, as long as you could just pull the ordinance and do it. You've, in essence, it's been condemned. So it's a, I'll take a risk, but, I mean, that's, that's a big risk for other people to take.
Well, you can also sue us and get an injunction.
Cur, again, I, I, look, I'm, I, I love attorneys, I hate fighting cities with attorneys, though, it's bad mouth and everyone's mouth, and everyone's thing. I'm going to have to do that with another city, it's, it's never fun.
So how many marks do you need for this?
Uh, this one's going to take a while for me to get to it, I, I, so I, I definitely, I mean, I could start, but, see, the problem is for you guys and for me, the risk is I start, as he just said, and then I go, this is going to take sixty, seventy thousand dollars of my money, probably more. Um, so, I mean, there's a, I go and invest that, and then you guys at any time can pull the trigger. And I didn't think about that until he mentioned it, because I was, on the first one, that's easier, that's twenty thousand bucks. Um, so, but this one, this is sixty, eighty thousand dollars. I pulled the trigger on it, you guys decide you don't like the progress, and I'm stuck holding the bag. Now, I could sue you, get an injunction, we can all go to court, well, you guys don't, I have to. Uh, I got to go to court and plead with my case with a judge, and it just, it's a, I like being there. I mean, obviously, you can always come back around, it's not like this house has sat there for one year and it caught fire a month ago. So it's been like this for as long, a long time.
Okay, anyone else like to speak for or against this item? This time I'll close the public hearing, um, and ask the board what direction you'd like to go in this. So the, the recommendation would, is that the, to adopt the ordinance, and what the gentleman's asking for is just to basically rescind the ordinance. And, uh, so you, we hear what he's asking, but we do know that we've got the time and efforts, you know, to get to this point, so I think the board needs to make a decision on, on the way that you'd like to proceed with it.
I'm fine with the table, but I'm not fine with rescinding.
Well, I'm going with table, but it all depends on how long.
Yeah, table and how long, and then a progress report periodically. I mean, and like, you know, at least Stephen giving us a progress report. I know he's got a prioritized list, and that's, that's well and good, but, uh, we've got a property identified, you know, our priority may not be his priority, so, uh, we're trying to.
And our priority is the, our priority is the one that matters.
Exactly.
Not his.
Yep.
And so my thing is, you know, um, what I have experienced in the past, if someone's going to say, well, you know, I need a month, and you come back in a month, they really hadn't done a whole lot, they want another month, so, I mean, I would need to see some tangible evidence that, you know, that we're making progress here on our schedule, again, not his.
Well, I could say the same thing, too, but I do think in all fairness, that we have to do it in a fairness of such, so whatever we do, we have to give him time, or make him have the time to report back to show us where to go do, and what he has accomplished, and at some point in time, he gets past his fifty percent mark, then maybe he's going to finish it.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we, uh, table this, uh, for sixty days.
Okay, have a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by, uh, Councilmember Turner, second by Councilmember McLean to table this particular item for sixty days, or should that read?
January meeting.
January meeting, thank you. To be tabled and brought back before this board at the January meeting for an updated report. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Stephen, you get a break now. Thank you for, oh, thanks for all your hard work, Stephen, I know you're before us most, most every month with a number of these things, and it's helping us to get the town cleaned up and helping to move in a positive direction. Thank you for what you do and your stuff. Item nineteen, I would like to call Heather Adams. Heather heads up our Public Utilities Department, and she's here to discuss a community development block grant.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, per our community development block grant requirements, um, the city must adopt a compliance program manual, um, that encompasses a, uh, range of compliance plans. Um, a list of those plans, um, and a summary for each is included in your packet. Um, there's twenty-four of them, so we won't go through all of those tonight, um, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those. Um, a copy of that manual will be, um, located in the administration department throughout the project, and anyone that needs access will have access to it. Tonight, uh, we need council to consider, um, approving the resolution of adopting the compliance manual, and also, um, the city manager, myself and Tammy Williams are listed as, um, compliance officers, um, in certain provisions of the manual. So we need council to grant, uh, the three of us the authority to execute grant-related documents, um, that do not require the mayor's signature.
And I'll add, um, you know, we've had block grants before and, and adopted many of these same policies, these are new and updated policies, and these are specific to infrastructure program, not the housing program that we've done in the past, so, uh, even though we've, we've done similar adoptions in the past, um, where it does supersede, like the language plan and some other things that may have been updated, we'll be using the most updated, um, programs. But not all of the programs that we adopted previously are in this package because it's a different kind of program, so, just in case you were wondering about that.
Any questions for Heather? Here, Nuno, open the floor for a decision to be made on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, we need to adopt the resolution, uh, as presented in our package.
Motion by Councilmember Seals to, uh, uh, approve the resolution, second by Councilmember McLean. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty, let's call Matthew Boone, Assistant City Manager, to the front and, uh, give us a report on a, uh, engineering service agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, back in August of this year, uh, council approved staff to go out and advertise for an RFQ for a firm to do a full-scale, uh, update on our capital improvement plan for our water sewer, also, uh, to determine, um, uh, system development fees, the cost of, um, which is required by the general statute if you wanted to look into charging those for new development. Um, as far as the CIP plan, basically this just, uh, uh, it checks conditions and vulnerabilities of our current system, um, it scores it to make sure everything is working, how it works, uh, prioritizes, uh, actually, you know, comes up with the cost, prioritizes what the, uh, the most important things to go to, uh, you know, to look at for within a twenty-year period. Uh, so basically, that's kind of what they'll, what they'll do in that plan, or in the, as far as the RFQ is concerned, we had three, um, letters of interest, and, uh, we scored that a few months back, and, uh, Wooton Company was the, the highest collective score for that. They have said that to do both the capital improvement plan and the system development, um, study, it would be approximately six months to do both. As far as the system development fees are concerned, basically the general statute states that if you, you know, you have to hire a, either a financial firm or engineering firm to go in and do those, uh, and to do a study to determine what we can charge, or up to what we can charge for new development. For development fees, you can charge, uh, a certain amount, whatever, you know, we decide on what you can use those funds for, it's only for growth for development. So basically, you know, uh, new water lines to a development, upgrades to plants, um, pump stations, things that would facilitate that growth, um, rather than, you know, uh, height, you know, rate hike for, uh, current customers to pay for these new developments, the developers will pay for that, you know, and as far as, you know, putting in that new infrastructure. I can answer any questions you have as far as the fees and the, the plan, uh, I just want to kind of give you a general idea of what both of those were.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Matthew. Okay, open up the floor for the decision to be made on item twenty.
We make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter to a engineering service agreement with the, uh, Wooton Company to complete a water and sewer capital improvement plan along with the system development fee study, and furthermore, to approve a budget amendment in the amount of, uh, forty-six thousand, two hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Turner, second by Councilmember Bradham. Any discussion on this matter? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item twenty-one is a, uh, I'm going to turn this over to Stephen New Schaefer for a report.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The, uh, the city has, uh, been working to improve the, and update the site that we own out on Three Bridge Road, uh, for a better part of a year now. Um, we were updating the stormwater, uh, infrastructure that's out there, we had a stormwater permit that was issued many years ago for that property. Um, we've, uh, applied to update that, uh, permit and, uh, perform some other, uh, grading work out on the property. We have, uh, received two quotes for the grading work that's out on that property, uh, one for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and forty-two cents, and another for two hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. The engineers that we have retained to, uh, do this process have reviewed the work and proposals from the two companies, and have, uh, recommended that we go with Sawyer's Land Developing Incorporated for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and forty-two cents. There's an, uh, there's also a accompanying budget amendment, um, that will split, uh, the cost of this, uh, work between the fund balance for the general fund and for the utility fund, since both, uh, funds utilize that property, uh, that we own.
Okay, any questions for Steve on this report? Okay, open the floor for a decision on this matter.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award a contract to Sawyer's Land Developing Incorporated to complete the Three Bridge Road site improvement project and approve the budget amendment to pay for the construction work.
Motion by Councilmember Bradham, second, Councilmember Tark. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-two, I will also turn this over to, uh, Mr. New Schaefer.
Um, before I move on to that, I'd just let you know that the anticipated completion of that project should be, um, sometime in January. They, they specified January seventh, but I'll just say January, you know, because of weather and things like that, so that's the goal and, and the permit that we've entered in with the, with the state, uh, for that, uh, project to be completed in January. All right, so the next item is, uh, contract to purchase real property. Um, the city council, um, met to, uh, uh, give approval in a closed session, so now that the decision was to move forward with the purchase, the, uh, comes to, um, open session, uh, the approval of property, one parcel, um, from Randy Dickens LLC at the purchase price of sixty thousand dollars. The property is located at five oh six East Broad Street, PIN number being fifteen sixteen seventy-six fifty-two seventy-nine dot zero zero zero. Uh, so the recommended action is, uh, a motion to approve the purchase of five oh six East Broad Street as presented for the purchase price of sixty thousand dollars, authorizing the mayor and city manager to proceed with the purchase and to approve the budgetment as presented.
Any questions on this? Open the floor for a motion on this matter.
So.
Motion by Councilmember Tark to.
Second.
And second by Councilmember Bradham. All in.
Turnage.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Turnage. Any discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-three comes before the board, uh, and this is a, um, the city board, uh, has the privilege of having a council member to serve on the Dunn Travel and Tourism Authority Board of Directors. Our current board member is Councilmember Tark, and, um, he's very involved with it and, and knows what's going on and is always able to report to us any questions or anything that, uh, the board may have, or anything that they may be working on. And, uh, it is the board's, uh, vote on this, but I'd like to recommend that we keep Councilmember Tark in this position for the upcoming year.
Motion to approve. And a second.
Motion from Councilmember Turner, second, Councilmember Bradham. Any discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Councilmember Tark, thank you for your willingness to serve on this, appreciate you looking out for us.
He wanted me to ask to, if we could add doubling the salary, too.
I think so, we don't even have to have board approval for that. Okay, it's been a long agenda, um, starting to get near the end here. Item twenty-four is Stephen New Schaefer to give us a report on what he's got going on, and turn it over to him at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, mayor and city council members attached to have the, um, progress and for the goals, short-term and long-term goals of the city, uh, that were, uh, adopted in, uh, previous work sessions and retreats. You see the, uh, the items that are highlighted in there, if you have any questions about those, I'll be happy to answer them, or try to answer them as best I can. Um, we're getting close to the end of the calendar year, and, and generally, we're, we're preparing to do an update to this for the retreat and, uh, you know, go through the accomplishments that, that we've, uh, seen over the past year, and then, uh, update you and, and bring some, uh, better final forecasts for the projects that are ongoing. So right now, that's really what we're trying to, you know, gear towards is to assemble those and, and be ready to report for those in, uh, January.
Any idea when, uh, Watauga is going to be, it says begins in November.
Right. Um, the notice to perceive is essentially for November first, so, um, they'll have, they, they said that they would have it done by the end of the month.
Okay.
They've got temperature working against them as well, as long as it's warm days, they'll be able to pave, so. I don't see if the, the, any holdup in the last week that I know of, so.
It's packed down pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, just a comment.
Yes, sir.
For Tammy and, and you, Steve, uh, just make sure that for our retreat, we have plenty of time for visioning from our program that we did, and don't stick it in the corner, let's try to make sure we have some good chunk of time for that with my request.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Any further questions for Steve? Okay, thank you. Now, you, we really know we're getting to the end when we bring up Jim Roberts for our financial report, and like to call on him at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the city's finances are, are continuing to be in good shape at this point in time as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, with all accounts, uh, calculated, we have nine million, four thirty-five, three fifty-four. Uh, in September, we had nine million, three fifty-two, so we're up about eighty-three thousand dollars. In October of twenty twenty, we had six million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. So that's about, uh, three million less than we currently have. That basically has, uh, we have a substantial amount of money from the federal government that we haven't spent, that we're sitting on at the current time, and we also have our Powell Bill funds that we're sitting on, waiting on that project to take place, so we'll expend a substantial amount of those. Property taxes through September, we've received about six hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, in, uh, twenty twenty, we had received seven hundred thousand, it just is a timing issue in when people pay this, this. It just is a timing issue in when people pay this fall. So, that's kind of where that comes out. We have total taxes collected so far this year are $727,000. Now, that includes property, motor vehicles, downtown service district, all works. We do have taxes that'll be hitting our account here within the next week of about $202,000. So, that continues to move us on. So, we'll receive more in the next three months. That's when our substantial amount of taxes come into us. Sales tax for August receipts, another $233,000. That's a little less than they were in July at $252, but it's, again, $15,488,000 more than last year, this exact same time. So, sales taxes continue to be very good from that standpoint. Utility and sales taxes there are reported quarterly, so there's no change in that from the last month. Building permit fees for the month of October, $17,865. And to date, we've collected $72,000 or 55% of the budget, and we are 33% through with the year. So, that continues to be good for us all the way across the board. Water and sewer revenues for the month of October, $541,000. Collections in September were $551,000, but we are substantially ahead of last year by about $160,000 over last year at the same time. General fund expenditures, which you see the pies up there on the board for you to look at there in October were $806,000. That's less than they were both in September and in August. Total expenses to date are $3,594,000. And I will say that at that point, our revenue is $2,703,000. So, we're a little bit less on revenue than we are in expenses at this point, but that's to be expected due to the tax influx and what comes up in the next couple of months. We'll be balancing that out. Water and sewer fund expenses for October were $363,000. In September, they were $660,000. So, we're down a little bit there. Total expense to date's $1.6 million. That's 22.1% of the budget. And of course, the budget there is about $7.6 million. Water and sewer revenues, on the other hand, are $2,313,000. So, they are doing well, and they have a constant flow. Our money there is very consistent. So, that's a good piece to be from there. We did have $15,188 in the general fund debt service paid last month. We didn't have any in the water and sewer fund. Those tend to lump up based on when we made our loans and when they were set up from there. And that's our finance report for this month.
Jim, what about the weedy lots?
What about the weedy lots? Well, weedy lots, we continue to receive some. We had some payoff this last time. We had about... Let me get down here and find where we stand here. We had payments totaling $10,491 in weedy lots, but we also billed about $9,000 worth. So, we are continuing to receive monies. Different kinds, different amounts come in. We send billing invoices. We went ahead. We had 15 pre-lean letters that went out in October, 14 for weedy lots, one for demolition. Lean amendments were filed totaling another $6,000. So, we're continuing to press that forward. Melissa Matty does a really good job of tracking that down and making sure we're sending those out from there. And we've also got some of those over with Pope and Pope Law Firm. They're helping us with a few of those, too. I think we've got three or four, maybe even five of those that we're working on foreclosures on. So, we are continuing to press forward with each of those.
Okay. Thank you very much. Always a good report. Item 26 gives me the opportunity to make announcements, and I would like to inform the public and those in attendance tonight that the city of Dunn offices will be closed this coming Thursday for Veterans Day. This weekend, Downtown Dunn Live at 5:00 will be held on Broad Street, and it will be featuring John Dupree and his band. There will be food trucks there and available to... For folks to eat that evening. It will be held on November 13th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Broad Street. Invite all the public to come out and enjoy theirselves at that. Next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 15th at 7:00 p.m., and that will be held in the courtroom here. Is there anything else other board members would like to bring before the board tonight? Any comments?
Are we in November?
Yes, there's a second meeting.
Do we have an additional meeting this month? We have a presentation to discuss paving, I think. Is that correct?
Bathing, yes, sir, and a couple of other small items.
Yeah. Any further comments for board members?
Mr. Mayor, I hope to work and get back to the people that spoke earlier after their testimonies and certainly wish them well in their recovery. Is that the right word? I don't know. But, I hope they can get their life back on track. I will certainly pray for them and their families.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
Motion by McLean, second by Seals. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.